Roll call, please.
President Byrne.
Here.
Trustees Cook.
Here.
Oppenheim.
Here.
Tacaoka.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Marquardt.
Here.
We have a court present. Will everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, any citizens want to address the board tonight on anything, yeah, other than what's, if it's that committee to hold, then you can talk to those that committee to hold.
Hi, my name is Christine Cohen. I live at 2025 Inverness Drive in Greg's Landing, Vernon Hills. I've lived here going on five years, and before that, we lived in Deerfield for 31 years. Were still property owners in Deerfield. We raised our two daughters in Deerfield. They were born in 80 and 86. And for our time there, Deerfield had a regulation that children shall wear bicycle helmets. I was last here for the meeting where you discussed the accident at the intersection of Greg's and, uh...
Honey.
Yes, okay, thanks. And was pleased to see that you were looking into some solutions. When we first moved to Deerfield, now I'm a grandmother, and my daughters and their families, four grandchildren, all live very nearby me. I was struck by the fact that so many children do not wear bicycle helmets. It's probably pretty simple to look on the website to see the ordinances in Deerfield and take a look at it, or call the village, as I did after this last meeting that I was at. I'm wondering, was this ever considered in Vernon Hills? Do you know?
Probably years ago.
Okay. I'm asking that it be reconsidered on behalf of the children. Unfortunately, parents aren't all diligent in seeing that their children travel on bicycles safely, and so I think that would be a good thing for the village to take up and protect our children. Thanks.
Pat, you want to speak to that one, or, oh, Mark, I don't care.
You want to go first?
Tag team?
Let's tag team. Well, I'll just say, we believe there's actually a strong compliance with children wearing helmets. I'm not sure what age you're kind of referring to as they get older. Maybe they think it's not as cool to wear it anymore, and the compliance goes down. But we have incentive programs in place at the police department. We get donated gift certificates and like to reward good behavior when we're out there seeing our kids wear helmets and being safe. But we share your concern. We'd like every child to wear a helmet when they're riding a bicycle, and every adult as well.
Again, I'd like to suggest the village look into an ordinance so that parents who don't have their children wear bicycle helmets. In our neighborhood, there's a plethora of them. So, it's my concern. Thanks.
I'd say, you know, in my former role, this was addressed and discussed by the board on at least one or two occasions. And part of the issue is, I think Chief Kreese reached out to you and spoke with you, didn't he?
No.
On this?
No.
Okay, because I thought someone generated an email and he responded.
Not at all.
Part of the problem with it is, is we try to, as the role of the police is not so much to be the enforcers, but to try to encourage people to comply with the rules and regulations that are set up for their own safety. Part of the problem with having an ordinance for bicycle helmets is, what happens if you find a five- or six-year-old child that's not wearing a helmet? Do we issue them a ticket? Do we put them, we can't allow them to ride their bicycles away because they don't have a helmet and they're not in compliance. Do we put them in the back of the police car and transport them home with their bicycles? Our role has always been one to stop and educate the children and speak with them. Having an ordinance on record that can't reasonably be enforced makes it very difficult, and it's kind of like an unenforceable ordinance. We do everything we can to try to encourage people to wear bike helmets. But again, like I said, what do you do when you have a child or two children that are riding bicycles without helmets?
I have a couple responses there. What do you do when you have somebody who doesn't have a driver's license and registration?
They're arrested, and they're taken, do you really want us arresting seven-year-olds?
It's better than the alternative. Again, this was all prompted, in my thinking, by that accident that was being discussed, and did...
Now, that young man did have a helmet.
Okay, that's good to know. You could also talk to Deerfield and see how they handle it. It was one thing about Deerfield, it was one of two things about Deerfield that made me confident in raising my children there. They had seat belts on their, on their school buses, all of them, always, and students were required to put their seat belts on. So, those two things are absent in Vernon Hills, as my grandchildren are raised here. And I'm just here to suggest that you look into it, because it does work in Deerfield. Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, state your name for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Simritha Keshav, and I live here in Vernon Hills. Respected ladies and gentlemen of the board, good evening. I'm here today representing the Go Green chapter here in Vernon Hills, and I'm joined by other members, Bharti and Bushra, who were here earlier this year, addressing to you a composting solution, as well as green team members from the congregation and Shaloma Vernon Hills. We are here today to support the food scrap option that's being presented to you by advance disposal. But before we get into the reasons of why we are supporting the program, I just want to take a moment to express our sincere thanks to the village staff, as well as the village board, for opening up a waste contract a year before its expiration date, which we haven't heard any of the other communities doing, as well as for you seeking resident input in the different green options. We know that it has taken other communities much longer to address this issue, so we want to thank you. Now, the reasons why we support a food scrap option is, recently, in a report by the New York Times, December 4th, scientists have stated that because of the effects of climate change, we are getting very close to irreversible changes. And what they say, that is, if we do not reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, we are going to reach a point of irreversible change. The EPA has estimated that food waste is the single largest component in our landfills. And when food waste sits in landfills, it releases methane, which is a greenhouse gas, which is 28 times more potent or more effective than carbon dioxide in trapping heat in our environment. So, when you take food waste and you divert it away from a landfill, what you're doing is, you're not only reducing methane emissions, but you're creating a valuable resource in compost. Compost makes our soil nutrient-rich, but research has also shown that it acts like a carbon sink. It sequesters carbon from the atmosphere, and that is what we need today. There are 46 communities in Illinois that are offering a residential curbside composting program to its residents, and there are 19 communities in Lake County that offer such a program to their residents, such as the Village of Grace Lake, Highwood, Mandaline, Riverwoods, just to name a few. And in some of these communities, this option is not seasonal, but it's year-round, and it's not an opt-in option, as in all members pay for it. So, we come here and we're asking for your support to provide us with a food scrap option. And we, as members of Go Green Vernon Hills, will stand by you to support this endeavor, not just by educating the community, which we have been doing in the past few months, but also creating an awareness. And finally, I would like to thank the village for the amount of time, and I know you've spent a considerable time in your staff, as well as your board meetings, at reviewing the different options. So, we thank you for taking your time, and we are very hopeful that the community will provide us this option. A very happy new year, and a very happy holiday season.
Yeah, happy new year to you, too. Mark, do you want to speak to that one? Because we're going to speak to it tonight, aren't we?
Actually, John is going to take that one.
Oh, okay.
But we are speaking to that tonight. And I believe he has spoken with her on the phone this afternoon.
Oh, okay.
To explain what the options are.
Okay.
And we'll be here.
Yeah, because there's going to be an option.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Through the, you know, the waste hauler, which is still advanced, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And we hope that you accept the food scrap option in the proposal that you pick.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you so much.
You know, we're going to have a discussion, so, thank you. All right, anybody else? Okay. With that said, next is a proclamation congratulating District 218, 128, two, yeah, I'm going.
128, that's our high school.
You know the building that you built?
Is this, yeah, the one, yeah, we did put a lot of time and effort into that. The District 128 Unified Special Olympics Floor Hockey Team. Could you guys, guys and girls, step forward?
Ooh, I like the jerseys.
Wow. Okay. I think they have more copies of the proclamation than people that are here, but let me read it into the record. The District 128 Unified Special Olympics Floor Hockey Team is comprised of students from Learyville High School and Vernon Hills High School. Who goes to Libertyville? Who goes to Vernon Hills? Okay, great. The District 128 Unified Special Olympics Floor Hockey Team won the state championship on Saturday, November 16th, 2019, at Northeastern Illinois University in Chicago. The District 128 Unified Special Olympics Floor Hockey Team, known as the Storm, beat Shebona Park by a score of three to one in the semifinals, and the Storm advanced to the finals and beat Douglas Park by a score of eight to three. Congratulations. We're not done yet. Significant amounts during this title run included Chris Marosen, okay, scoring just eight seconds into the championship game, which allowed Alexa Donato, Chase Miller, and Joey Litch to all score twice each, sealing the victory. This championship team is comprised of Alexa Donato, Anthony Burke told Anna Scholler, Karen, Corinne, Haley Dunbar, Nathan Ferrara, Joey, is it Litch?
Yes.
Okay. Joseph Miller, Chase Miller, Ruthania Venkat.
Ruthania Venkat.
Venkat?
Yeah, Ruthania.
Say the first name again?
Ruthania.
Okay. Okay, I concur. Chris Miller and Hoa Hewitt. This championship team is coached by Andy Compton and Sean Kelly. District 128 previously won the title in 2013, and is proud to bring the state championship back home where it belongs, in Vernon Hills. I, Roger Byrne, President, and the Village Board of Trustees, do hereby express our sincerest congratulations to District 128 Unified Special Olympics Floor Hockey Team in winning the state championship. Very good. Congratulations, 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 congratulations. Thanks for coming tonight. Congratulations. Coach, these are for you.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you.
Oh, that's cool. Okay. If the team wants to stay, you can. If you don't want to stay, you can go. You're welcome, you know, hey. Okay. Cassie Horvath, as in Cassie Black, are you here? Okay. Hello.
Hello.
Okay, this is, this is to thank Cassie Horvath, Ms. Hannah Frye, and Ms. Michelle Newman, okay, and appreciation for your dedicated service to the Vernon Hills Pageant. Ms. Hannah Frye and Ms. Cassie Horvath became involved with the Vernon Hills Pageant in 1996 when competing for Little Miss Vernon Hills. Hannah and Cassie began co-directing the pageant in 2008, after Hannah finished her year's serving as Ms. Vernon Hills. Three years later, Michelle Newman began co-directing with Hannah and Cassie in 2011. Since 2008, over 100-plus Vernon Hills residents have participated as beauty pageant contestants, representing Vernon Hills and prompting community service. While serving as pageant directors, Hannah, Cassie, and Michelle have worked with 26 Vernon Hills queens and their families. During their service as Vernon Hills Pageant Directors, 15 Vernon Hills queens have placed as finalists at the Lake County Pageant. Seven Vernon Hills queens have won the Lake County Pageant, more than any other community in Lake County. Excuse me. Therefore, I, Roger L. Byrne, President, and the Village Board of Trustees, do hereby express our sincerest appreciation to Cassie Horvath, and Hannah Frye, and Ms. Michelle Newman for their dedication and service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, proclamation.
And you're welcome to say anything you wish.
Yeah, congratulations. Thank you. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
We would just like to give a formal thank you, if that's okay. So, as you said, I became involved, when I was just six years old, in the Vernon Hills Pageant in 1996. And ever since then, I was involved every year since then. And so, every, you know, kid growing up has their thing that they're involved in. They do sports, or they do choir. And my thing was the Vernon Hills Pageant. And so, it's shaped my lives in ways that I can't possibly articulate to you all. And so, while, you know, it may not seem like a big deal, you know, to folks who aren't actively involved in the pageant, or folks who just kind of see the girls handing things out at the events, it's so much more than that. I've taken the skills that I've learned, the friendships that I've gained throughout my career, through every job interview I've had, and it's really shaped who I am today. And so, so thank you all for the opportunity, and thank our queens and contestants and families that we've had the opportunity to work with over the years. We really appreciate it, and it's changed my life, so, thank you.
Now, a question. Who does the count, you know, at the end?
Her husband.
Oh, yes, yes. The tabulation.
He does the tabulation.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, tell him he's been doing a great job.
Adding up the scores.
There's one famous year that Paul Harvey even mentioned us, you know, on his newscast.
Oh.
That was probably well over 20 years ago, you know? And because we kind of miss who the queen should have been.
Yeah, that was probably before her.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 no. No, you're, I'm thinking of you personally.
We'll keep things running smoothly with no pressure, Karen.
It's, yeah, in any event, you, thank you very much.
Thank you, absolutely. Thanks.
Okay. Last, but certainly not least, regarding proclamations, we have one for, in recognition of service, crew leader Al Funk, Vernon Hills Public Works Department. There you go, okay. By all means. Alan Funk began employment with the Village of Vernon Hills Public Works Department as a fleet mechanic, too, on May 5th, 1980. And ended his 39 years and nine months of dedicated service to the village as a crew leader for the fleet division. Alan assisted with overseeing the daily maintenance and purchasing of a fleet of approximately 110 vehicles and a large number of miscellaneous equipment, and also played a supervisory role as crew leader to the fleet division. Alan has served as a snow fighter by dedicating many tireless or tiring hours behind the wheel and under the hood of the snowplow, keeping the streets safe for our residents and the plows in operation. Alan is a wonderful family man, married 40 years to his high school sweetheart Patty. Are you here? Very nice. And is the father of two daughters, Andy and Nicole, and grandfather to four grandchildren, Rocco, Gianni, Isabel, and Cooper. Are they here?
They are.
Okay, good, very nice. Alan is known to have the amazing capability of retaining useless information. Well, you know, man after my heart, and has provided staff with much entertainment and competitive banter over the years with his unparalleled knowledge of TV trivia. All right, Al. Alan has been a great asset to the Village of Vernon Hills Public Works Department throughout his career, and has served with professionalism and distinction. Now, therefore, be proclaimed the president and board of trustees of the Village of Vernon Hills. On behalf of the entire Vernon Hills community, county of Lake, extend to Alan Funk their gratitude and thanks for his 39 years and, what, nine months?
Thirty-nine years and nine months.
Thirty-nine years and nine months of service to the community and the Village of Vernon Hills. You want to say something, Al? Here's your proclamation, among other things.
Absolutely.
I would like to say to Mayor Byrne, village board, village staff, coworkers, friends, family, residents of Vernon Hills, 39 years and nine months. It's, it was a long time, and I've seen a lot of change over those 39 years, but there's one thing that's stayed the same. Vernon Hills is still one of the best places to live and work. Thank you all, and I appreciate being a part of it.
All right, Al. Some little birdie, you know, said something to me, that you have a lot of knowledge also of Vernon Hills going back since you started in 80. So, is there anything unusual that we don't know about that we should have, we should have knowledge of?
Remember, this is going to be on TV.
Right, right, right.
Plus, your whole family's here and there, yeah.
Right, right. Like I said, there's very little, you know, skeletons in any closets. Vernon Hills has really been a wonderful place to live and work, and again, I can't reiterate it enough. I feel very fortunate to have been part of this. Good luck to everybody else.
Okay.
I'm looking forward to retirement, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
All right, Al. Okay. Everybody want to stay for the rest of the meeting now? All right.
Thank you, Al.
All right.
He stayed until 40 years.
Forty years, that's nice.
No, if he stayed a little longer, he'd get a little more, yeah, because he stayed past May.
Okay, 2020 meeting schedule. Everybody's had a chance to look at that, right?
Yeah, everyone's had a chance to look at it. We talked about it briefly at the last meeting, and I think the only date in question was the March date of March 17th, which was St. Patrick's Day. Hearing no objections, I think we've tentatively moved it to March 18th, because we have to submit the schedule to the clerk's office in Lake County. We can always change it if that doesn't work at a future date.
Okay.
And along those same lines, just a brief announcement that the next village board meeting, this is the only board meeting in December, so the next regularly scheduled meeting is January 7th, 2020, here at 7 o'clock at the village hall.
Okay. Okay, Assistant Village Minister John Petrillo and Vernon Hills Pageant Director recommendations.
Good evening. Can Ms. Kelly O'Brien and Ms. Karen Kalanowski approach the board? Mayor and Village Board, with Ms. Free, Ms. Newman, Ms. Horvath ending their service with the pageant, the outgoing directors have recommended Ms. Kelly O'Brien and Ms. Karen Kalanowski be considered by the board, and if the board so desires, to assume and be appointed as the new Vernon Hills Pageant Directors. So, we have them here today, so you can be introduced to them and ask them any questions, and if you see fit, they will be taking it from here.
She's the pageant queen. She speaks. I got all the answers.
Go ahead, yeah, sure.
I'll do a quick introduction. So, I'm Kelly O'Brien, and this is Karen Kalanowski. I was Miss Vernon Hills back in 2013, and I had started competing in the Vernon Hills Pageant when I was about 12 or 13. And Karen's daughter Haley, who is our current junior Miss Lake County, Hales.
Give away.
Compete, started competing back in...
2012.
2012. And so, me and Karen met because when I was Miss Vernon Hills, Haley was actually my little Miss Vernon Hills. And the best thing about the pageant is it doesn't just combine the queens. It actually is a time and moment for families to really interact in. The Kalanowskis, which was my little Miss family, the Shurellows, which was my junior Miss family, and my family now celebrate Christmas, Easter, birthdays. We go to each other's pageants, and I...
Confirmation sponsor.
I'm a confirmation sponsor, so it really speaks...
Truly a family.
...volumes, that it's not just the queens, it's the families and the community. I'm still keep in touch with several of the misses I even competed with. I've gone on now to compete at Miss Illinois and Miss Ohio, so pageants are still a very active part of my life, as well as Karen's and her daughters'. And so, we look forward to the opportunity to be able to be a part of a lot of young women's lives. And like Hannah said, one of the hardest interviews I had done was at a pageant. No job interview has come close to the questions I have been asked at a pageant interview or onstage, so it really gives you skills for life. It's not just about the dresses and the glitz, it's about the person you become through that experience. And so, we hope to be great advocates for that, for the women of Vernon Hills.
That's great, okay. Plus, now, did you go on to Lake County to be the queen ever?
I was. I was Miss Lake County in 2014.
Yeah, okay. Well, one of the seven, right?
Right.
Yeah, my daughter being the other one.
Okay. All right, well, that's great. All right, well, thank you, ladies, and, you know, if you're in, we're in also, so...
Deal.
It'll be great.
Do we need a motion?
Mr. President, yes, you need a motion.
Oh, okay.
Let me make the motion to recommend to, as the new co-directors of the Vernon Hills Pageant Committee, Ms. Kelly O'Brien and Ms. Karen Kalanowski.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
President Byrne.
Here.
Trustees Mar...
Aye.
Trustees Marquardt.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Tacaoka.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Schultz.
Here and I.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
They come over for the football game sometimes. That's when Madison comes out on the balcony and plays the Bears song on the trumpet. That's kind of special. All right, good night. Cheeto.
We're getting down here.
Yeah. Next we got Chief of Police Crease, Shop With A Cop. Oh, Deputy Chief Zimmerman.
Thank you, Mayor. What a great event for us. This past Saturday, we hosted our fourth annual Cops and Kids or Shop With A Cop program. District 73, a lot of help from them, sent us 51 children. Donations by Hits Pizza and Chick-fil-A, we were able to feed them lunch ahead of time and then take them by Lakeside Bus Company to Walmart where they got a hundred dollar shopping spree, all 51 kids accompanied by a police officer. Be remiss without thanking some special people here, the village board for your support, Chief Crease and Chief Leonis, we always partner with Lincolnshire Police Department for this event, and village manager, Flash Hour, for his very generous donation, thank you. A lot of Vernon Hills police officers and Lincolnshire police officers volunteered their time and I'd also be remiss without thanking Santa, who made a special visit and accompanied us to Walmart during the shopping spree. So thank you, what a great event for us.
That's great. Well, congratulations on a great event. Want to say anything, Mark?
No, it was fantastic. It was very heartwarming. These children really, really appreciated what they had and it would tear at your hearts if you could see what these kids purchased. They were purchasing socks, they were purchasing gloves, they were purchasing baking supplies for their mom to make cookies. It wasn't about picking out toys or bicycles or things for themselves like you would think most normal children would do. Very rewarding and that room was packed full of people, police officers, their families, children, people from the school and parents of the children. What, just an absolute fantastic event.
Well, congratulations again. Okay. On the vote agenda, we're going to pull...
Item J, please.
Yeah, okay. So is there a motion to approve items A through I?
Second.
Motion is second.
A through I.
Yeah. Roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye. Aye.
Trustee's Oppenheim.
Aye.
Takaoka.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Markport.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, the pulled item J is approval and pass of resolution 2019-048, a resolution authorizing the village president and village clerk to execute a license agreement with the Vernon Hills Park District, SMP Development LLC and the Vernon Hills Soccer Club. And I see you guys are obviously here tonight. Mark, you want to take this one?
Yeah, Mr. President, members of the board, this is an issue that has been before the board a number of times over the past four, five, six months. And essentially what we're looking to do, or what this, this resolution seeks to do, is to approve the installation of turf, AstroTurf if you will, I think it's just basically called turf now, turfing three of the soccer fields up in the Vernon Hills Athletic Complex, which would around, which would allow year-round use and playability of the fields, increasing the playability probably by 40 to 50 percent. This would be funded mainly by SMP, contributions from the Soccer Association and contributions from the Vernon Hills Park District with the balance picked up by the Village of Vernon Hills. Field work would, would begin in January and whether, whether permitting, they would be playing in April or May.
Okay, anything else to add to this one?
Sure, I can add a few other points. The funding source is from SMP Development, $900,000 to be paid at the rate of $90,000 a year for 10 years in the form of field use agreements. $300,000 from the Vernon Hills Soccer Club to be paid, $150,000 upfront, $16,666 for nine years and the Park District at $75,000. What I do want the board to be aware of, this is not a secured obligation by any of the users. There's no collateral for this payment and this is not a contractual obligation. This is being presented merely as a field use agreement for the rates that I've indicated. If any one of the licensees do not pay, the remedy for the village according to this agreement is to terminate their use of the fields. So there is, worst case scenario, exposure to the village that you will be funding this if, if these organizations cannot fund their obligations. Of course, that's worst case scenario and we're hoping for the best case scenario that the 10 years will go by and these organizations will fund their obligations and continue to be successful as they have been for many years here in, in the community.
Any comments or questions from the board on this?
Motion to approve resolution 2019-48.
There's a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, then there's the second. Mark, trustee Markport.
I know in fact, the situation of saying that it's a possibility of us funding it. I know that actually Chad has been with the village with doing tournaments for 10 years, I believe. I look at this as a win-win-win-win situation, very helpful for this village. Mind you, the tournaments that are run in this village, the people that come from all over will be staying at our hotels, going to our restaurants, going to the stores. So again, on this, this is a big yes on my part, so I, I look forward to it.
Trustee, Takaoka.
Yeah, I concur with trustee Markport. You know, I think based upon the track record of, you know, Chad and I think, you know, where this all started with Mr. Atkinson here. And actually, before I vote absolutely yes, I want Kevin to come up here and just to give a little brief history of how this Vernon Hills Soccer Club started, because I think everyone needs to know. I mean, I've known Kevin a long time, I knew the program when he first started it and, you know, I think, you know, people should understand, you know, why we're standing behind, you know.
And we're happy we can play in Vernon Hills because Markport and I, we used to go, go all over God's half acre in Libertyville, you know, yeah.
Kevin?
First, thank you, Greg, and thank you, Mayor Byrne. So when I, when I moved to Vernon Hills 14 years ago, 15 years ago, there was no soccer club here, right? So we had to travel to, to Libertyville to play or elsewhere. When I grew up, I grew up on the south side of the city in St. Louis, right? I was one of 10 kids. It wasn't as nice an area as this, let's put it that way. And so, and for me to play, I had to leave the city and go to the suburbs and I had the opportunity to do that because I was actually a pretty good player and I got kind of plucked out. What I wanted was something different for my kids. I wanted them to have the opportunity to play in their town. I wanted, I recognized how incredible these facilities were and it made no sense to me that we didn't have that facility here in Vernon Hills and we didn't have a club, right? That we could be proud of, that we could be, that could be part of our community. So if you guys remember Patricio, started it with Patricio 12 years now, 12 years ago? And, you know, it was with one team when my, my son, who's now a freshman in college, was six, right? So we grew it up, brought on Andrew and Peter and we really made it something that we were proud of and hopefully that the village can be proud of, that the players can be proud of and that everyone can be proud of. For me, this is the next step, right? We had a few things that we wanted to do, we wanted to build this, we wanted to build a tournament so we could bring other, you know, other communities, other states in to see our facilities. And then building out these, this part of the facility is sort of the, the final step for me where I can look at it and say, wow, we built something that we can really be proud of right now, but then kids 10 years from now, 20 years from now can be playing on and we can continue to be proud of. So I appreciate the opportunity.
So how many kids are in the program?
Uh, right now, what is the total number? So we have about, there are...
200 plane travel.
Yeah.
And then 300 per season.
Per season, yeah, yeah. And then we did build up a tournament now that has, what, 600 teams in it last year? From how many states?
A lot of teams from maybe eight, 10 states.
Yeah, so we have people coming to Vernon Hills and from all over the country, seeing these facilities.
Yeah, that's good. That's why we built them.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a reality, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, that's why we built them. Okay, anybody else want to comment on this?
Well, my kids are part of the program, it's a great run program, I'm very proud that they played there. They've learned a lot, thanks to these guys right here, so it's our fields, we have to do the investment for our kids, so I'm all for it as well.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
So we got a motion and a second. Roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustee's Cook.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Takaoka.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Markport.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you very much.
You know, okay. And, and congratulations to the kids.
That's right.
Yeah.
Thank you for your hard work, too.
Hey, guys, absolutely. Congratulations, yeah. Where'd you grow up? Oh, St. Louis. You said south side, I thought. Hey, south side, you know? It's okay. Take care. Okay. Alrighty, and then we got the up, we got the update on advanced disposal contract proposal.
Thank you, good evening again. Earlier this year, the village learned Waste Management was seeking to acquire advanced disposal, the village's current provider of residential refuse and recycling services. Under advice from SWALCO, we were encouraged to look at service options and perhaps seek a contract extension due to concerns that if advance were acquired by Waste Management during the first quarter of 2020, there would be potentially less competition and no other waste service providers operating their own landfills in Lake County next year. At the previous board meeting, village staff and officials from Advance presented an extension proposal. The options included a contract extension with services being status quo with weekly refuse and weekly recycling and a contract proposal for weekly refuse and the concept of every other week recycling with the additional services of an electronics recycling collection point at Public Works, needle collection points, and a seasonal food scrap program for residents who utilize lawn refuse services. After discussion between representatives from Advance and the board and having an opportunity to evaluate container options, staff was directed to solicit community feedback on this subject matter as well as a third service option, which included cost for weekly refuse and recycling pickup and à la carte pricing for an electronics recycling collection point at Public Works, Sharper's needle collection points, and the cost of implementing a seasonal food scrapping program or what is known as a ride-along organics program. Staff assembled a document with four graphics for the board to review. The first graphic captures the cost of each option along with services to be provided. The second graphic captures benefits and areas of note or concern with each service option. The third graphic is a cost comparison of neighboring communities. It should be noted, each contract may have its own add-on services or none at all. What staff was given from SWALCO was the amount each municipality negotiated during their most recent contract. The fourth graphic is a chart showing where our community expressed interest with cost and/or specific refuse programs. The village utilized its village voice newsletter, social media, and our website to solicit community feedback on potential services. Per the board's request, à la carte services for the following options were assessed at 11 cents per month per residence for electronics recycling, 3 cents per month per residence for seasonal scrapping, food scrapping, and advance is offered to absorb the cost of needle collection in the extension proposal. At this time, we are seeking consensus from the board to approve one of the listed options and/or direction, additional direction on how to proceed.
Dr. Oppenheim.
So when I took a look at these numbers here, I wasn't sure if I should be elated or offended, honestly, because I, I don't know if you recall, but I was the one that asked for that third option to find out how much more it was and to find out that it was only 14 cents a month more made me kind of upset that that wasn't presented to us in the first place. They were really trying to push us to, to drop back to the every other, every other week. I guess the only question is whether or not there is such damage to the roads of the way we have it currently and Dave's not in the room. I'm not sure where, where, where he went, but, yeah, if you can grab him, I'd just be curious to know how, how he feels about the, the effect of the, the current amount of trucks going over the path really affects the roads and whether or not that should, that should be something we should consider strongly. And barring that, there's absolutely no reason why we shouldn't, in my mind, continue every week recycling and for 14 cents more, get all of the benefits that the community really wants, so. Dave, I just wanted to ask you, the one, the one seeming advantage of every other week recycling was the decreased truck traffic on the roads for the one recycling truck. How significant do you really feel that that is?
It, it's very significant. Yeah, cars don't cause over, don't overly concern me as far as impact and loading to the roadway, it's the heavier vehicles. Impact to our roadways, waste hauling trucks are a substantial impact to all of our, our roadways, so the, the more that we can franchise things and have less garbage trucks on our roads, that's good for our roadways.
Could you put a dollar figure on that over, over five years, 20 years? I mean, we're talking...
I, I would struggle to give you an accurate answer.
Yeah, like, I mean, how mu, we, we have a 20-year plan to, to replace roads, right? So would we be able to extend that significantly at all by not having the trucks on there?
I, I think it would be more accurate to say it would keep us on schedule for our current plan, that there wouldn't be any more adverse impact beyond what our, our plan is.
So that's one competing concern, but there's the other competing concern of, from, at least from my own household, people really want, people really want every week recycling, so.
All right.
That's something to, to wrestle with. Thank you.
Okay, trustee Cook.
Yeah, that was the item I got the most feedback on was the every week recycling because a number of the associations, the 65 is still a little bit large and difficult to fit into the smaller garages and a 35 gallon will not take you two weeks. The 65 will, I mean, I experimented with it and, and it works just fine, but it still is a little large for some of the smaller garages and some of the associations. What is our plan, exactly how will this green option be handled? Do we, I mean, is that going to be, has that been worked out yet or?
Can you clarify what?
I mean, with the food.
The food scrapping?
Yeah, the food scrapping.
So it is my understanding, this only applies to single-family residences in this contract as you see it before you. So if you have a lawn refuse bag and you live at a single-family residence, you, during the season from, I believe it'd be April 1, I believe to probably November 30th or whenever they stop picking up, you can drop in your organics in that bag and they are going to select a new provider of services to take that to, if you want to call it a compost pile.
Okay.
There, there is however, good news and I'm sure SEMA, you know, I hope SEMA is in agreement with this, so one of the challenges is many of the people that live in HOAs felt excluded by that and the challenge is, isn't, I ran this past council earlier today just to confirm it, the, the HOAs have individual covenants and declarations that can't be more restrictive. isn't I ran this past council earlier today just to confirm it, the- the HOAs have individual covenants and declarations that can't be more restrictive, and as this was initially presented to me on behalf of Go Green Vernon Hills, that they wanted to see this implemented village-wide. The same challenging, uh, comments and reluctance to that program being forced on HOAs is what I received. You- you talked about the, uh, the container. There were some HOAs that did not want an- an additional container, and I- I had it in here, but due to the amount of people, I believe there's a thirty-five in view of some of the board members right outside. That is what- that is what Advance is proposing for HOAs. However, the way it has to work is, uh, the individual resident has to approach their HOA and get permission, and if they do, they can enter into an agreement, just like a resident, for that service to be provided, but they- I can't give, uh, an individual living in an HOA, uh, permission to violate a- a tenant or a- a term of that HOA and enter into that. So that- so that, it is possible. It is possible to implement, but they, the HOAs have to want it.
How often would that be picked up?
I- I believe it'd be the same as everybody else, uh, once- once a week.
Regular, like, with the regular garbage cycle, but- but would it be a third truck, then?
It'd be not only a third truck, a- a third container.
Right, and- and see, that's part of the problem. Um, again, i- if a sixty-five won't fit as your second can, most people don't have a place for a third can, you know, period. I mean, within the- within the confines of some of the smaller, and there- there- there is no, as you pointed out, no yard clippings or anything like that because of the fact that it's all done by a- a master contractor, so, I don't see any way we could make it mandatory. And- and optional and let them negotiate with their own associations is the- is- is absolutely the way to go.
Okay, uh, yeah, so, yeah, this deal is- is a pretty good one. The fourteen cents, is it four- fourteen cents for the food waste and fourteen cents for the electronic?
Fourteen total.
Total is four-
Eleven and three.
Yeah.
Sounds like we got a winner here, you know?
Well, especially adding the electronic is good, um.
Right.
Well, you know, you got a lot of other trucks that drive all over town making deliveries, not maybe, or moving people. I mean, granted, the- the garbage trucks are here, you know, at least two days a week as we speak, you know? Is, how many, you know, I- I always question, how many people actually have a second pickup? Do we even know? That's good. Well, I, you know, like, on my street, I don't- I don't think anybody does, you know?
No one in my neighborhood. I shouldn't say no one, but it's probably one out of every-
Yeah.
Thirty has a second pickup.
So they can't be that heavy. On Thursdays, they can't be that. Yeah, they can't be that heavy, 'cause, you know-
Well, it's the combination of-
It's the truck itself, though.
It's the combination of the weight of the truck, and one of the other things is, the truck is stopping and starting so much. And then when they use the- the hoist to dump that thing that rocks the truck, and- and all of that adds stuff that other trucks, just driving over the street, don't add to the, I mean, that stopping and starting is what, if you've ever noticed driving on the tollway, well, not anymore, 'cause you've got open tolling, but it used to be around the toll booths was where the roughest pavement was, and that was from the trucks stopping as they would come up to the- yeah, heavier trucks stopping create a ripple effect in the pavement.
Yeah, you have- you have the, uh, the truck wheel lane rated adjacent to the curb. That's the hardest spot to compact, and, uh, so it's- it's double trouble there. I just- I just like where this is headed in terms of electronic recycling. That has been something that our residents have asked for a long period of time. We weren't able to accommodate them because, remember when the Cooney Light Show ended and we had all the storage boxes, so we had to discontinue it. We were supporting Gray's Lake, who was shouldering the burden for the large part of the county, and that we're able to do this at our Public Works offices and do that for the residents. I- I'm really encouraged by that.
So what's the process gonna be for the electronics recycling now?
Um, so it would be at our Public Works facility. We would put, uh, a pellet area where residents, any time of the- the day, could drop them off, and then my team will bring it on to the, uh, opposite side of the gate, the controlled part of the gate, and we will put it into a dumpster that has, uh, an open, uh, door for it, and then we will work with them to have it recycled. So it's- it's gonna be accessible to the residents.
Don't have to drive up to Gray's Lake any longer. You just drive over to Green Leaf and West End Court.
Yeah, much shorter lines.
Yep.
And that, we'll have a list of what types of items are acceptable for that program.
We'll- we'll- we'll work through as far as, we- we used to have a sign that had specifically what items, but, you know, it's your electronics, televisions, uh, computers, uh, things like that.
Plus also, because you'll have the traffic now flowing there, you'll, I'm assuming you'll have the fabric box right next to it?
Yes, we still have that.
And people will become more aware that you can drop off used towels or torn-up clothes or whatever, anything that is fabric-based that can be recycled also, and we have, we currently have that pickup available to residents, but I would suggest probably one in one thousand know that it's there.
Absolutely.
What about, uh, like NiCad batteries and CFL bulbs and things like that?
That's not a program that we'll be handling in Public Works. I'm not sure how SWALCO handles that.
NiCad batteries can be taken to, uh, Home Depot. Home Depot has, right by their front door, uh, in town, they have a area to, you can just dump them in there. You don't get any credit for them or anything if you're looking to think you're doing something good, no, but they'll take them for you.
Thank you.
Okay.
The only concern that people expressed concerning pricing was some of our homeowner associations of townhomes and, you know, the, uh, kind of, uh, some of the, um, smaller units and- and, uh, smaller areas were concerned about any increase, but I think they can absorb fourteen cents or whatever it is.
It's still a, there's still a larger increase than- than the current. Fourteen cents was- was-
Yeah.
If we were-
Right, so I wanted- I wanted to share, so when we were talking about, you know, the price that, uh, Advance is quoting, so just so everybody knows, the existing contract right now, the price appears eighteen seventy-one. Uh, what they were offering with this, if we went to the every other week component, was eighteen seventy-one. So they were o- offering to say status quo if we accepted that. By going, uh, to every week, trash pickup and recycling with the additional items that they asked, that we asked them to à la carte price for us, the new price for single-family residents is going to be twenty dollars and eighty-three cents, which I- I show as two dollars and twelve cents is your increase per- per month for single family.
Yeah.
So just to be clear, I didn't want there to be confusion. It's only a- a twelve, uh, cents jump.
Twelve cent differential between having every week without those additional services and every week with those additional services.
And those other services are kind of mandated if we want to move forward living on this planet.
Yeah.
Right, and so the- the cons- the concept of every other week, you know, it wasn't something that just Advance was pushing. There's, I believe it's called the, I think it's the SWALCO twenty fifty plan, and there's obviously a- a larger intent to have zero waste and obviously much less emissions. So this, as I- as I said, this is, was a trend-setting thing for Lake County. We would have been the first. As I shared with Mark and the others as I was preparing this, you know, nobody wants to be first in anything, uh, but that was the- that was kind of the push that SWALCO was giving, is, you know, we need to start, uh, reducing emissions and diverting, uh, items from the landfill, so, you know, I apologize for how confusing it's been. It's, uh, it's been confusing for staff as well, trying to work with all the groups, uh, listen to all the HOAs, and try and come up with what I- what I would call a plan that's perfect. Uh, it's- it's three options, and, uh, I think the option, uh, I- I believe that third option, I believe it meets every, I believe it meets Go Green's objectives. I know that SWALCO liked it. Uh, they called us today to say they thought, they thought, or they hoped that it would pass.
Can I make a motion to, uh, accept the third option? For twenty dollars and eighty-three cents for, uh, weekly refuse, weekly recycling, and electronics recycling, food scrapping, and needle collection.
But as you said, individ- individual associations are gonna be able to negotiate their own-
Yes.
Second pick-up service. What about individual homeowners? They will also have-
So, single family, if they have seasonal food scrapping, I believe like you do now, uh, if you subscribe to that service, you're going to get that- that service.
Yeah, so you have the choice.
Correct.
Okay.
If you don't subscribe to the seasonal landscape waste, then you can't participate in the food scrapping program.
Correct.
Which we will have to lay out book chapter first.
So how much does that cost, then, the seasonal landscape waste program?
So what, so when I asked the question, so I could be able to answer SEMA how much it would cost her, I was told a hundred and twenty dollars a season, so does that sound correct? Or that's what they're offering for this next contract, is one-
It must be less now. Yeah, okay, well.
Give me a second. I think I have an email here.
Yeah. Right, you can't, yeah.
Can you just buy it per- per bag and not- and not a whole?
And I believe they do not, they are not, uh, they do not want to go to the sticker program. They need to have their, the cost captured to enter into the new contract. So I believe this is not going to be sticker-eligible, like people can come and buy the lawn stickers now.
Well, and of course, they're gonna send out notice of all we're discussing to everybody.
There is gonna be an education pa- campaign for twenty twenty with Lynn Brandl. Uh, it's going to be, uh, talked about, I believe that we already have it scheduled for, uh, working downstairs with- with Mike, start bringing Advance in for part of this edu- the plan was, if the board approves it, we are going to bring in Advance to start the education campaign, but on our side, we are working on how we're going to get the word out and do the education.
And what will be the new date for the contract to start?
So, uh, the current contract runs through November thirtieth of twenty twenty. They have offered to start the extension that next day, but start the services, uh, April thirtieth. They'll- they'll have time to get it going.
April some-
So this, so the seasonal food scrapping will be ready to go, they said, by this spring.
Yeah, and everybody will get educated on their own.
We- we are gonna be a huge part of the educational-
Well, I understand that, but I mean, you know, everybody can chew on what we send them.
We'll do our best, and, uh, again, I believe the communications team-
Yeah.
-has proven, uh, it can be very effective in getting information out, and we will, uh, just like the census, we will, if needed, create a page, and we'll just keep pushing, uh, information out.
Okay, roll call. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Takaoka.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Markford.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Yeah, and- and I'd like to just say, um, staff, especially John, an incredible job on- on this particular item because it has been so- so detailed and- and so difficult at times to understand, and, um, you guys did everything extremely well, including, again, appreciation to Advance. It was very nice of them to drop off the sixty-five so that I could, you know, try it and then take it. I took it to several other people that, in different associations and that, and- and we were able to, you know, actually do some firsthand research as to what would work and what wouldn't work, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
We will, um, we will have the contract ready, and it'll be on the consent agenda at a future board meeting, hopefully January seventh.
Yeah.
Can I ask again, when do, when can we get the different-sized cans? What's that process gonna be?
Can I answer you in January? Can I get the logistics from Chris on how he's gonna do that, how he plans on doing that?
Okay.
So I will, so under my report, I will bring that up on the plan, on how, uh, new containers can be delivered. Thank you.
Okay. So they've jumped over to seventy bucks a truck thing, huh? For recyclables. The charge.
Yeah, the charge. Usually, they said they got ten dollars.
Used to be, they used to get money back.
They used to get ten dollars back.
Yeah, I, which is, you know, so, I don't know, it's the extra, yeah, I guess it's the extra money they'll pay for it. Okay, uh, where we at? Next is, uh, any new business?
I'd just like to commend the Public Works Department, uh, one more time for beautiful decorations in this room, outside this building, and throughout the community. Again, a great job by Public Works to, uh, get the town decorated.
And to stay on the GFIs.
Okay.
Can I, uh-
Public Works.
Are you gonna talk about the latest shooting, or not? Save it for the big ones. I want to ask about, uh, go back to unfinished business, the, um, plan to remove the right lane going towards Huntington. What, um, what kind of communications are gonna be sent out, and when is that process gonna begin?
I appreciate that you asked that question. Uh, the update is that, uh, certainly the village board knows, but to want to share it with, uh, people at home. We did work with Lake County. Uh, they did concur as the board, uh, also directed staff to move forward with the elimination, temporary elimination of the right turn lane onto Huntington. We need to do a pre-study and post-study, so, uh, our consultants already went out there, and they've, uh, looked at the traffic counts up front, so that part has been conducted last week, and sometime early next week, we are looking to, uh, put out the, uh, the bollards to eliminate that right turn lane and add any necessary signage. You are exactly correct. Uh, the- the big part of this is, we're gonna talk with the Daily Herald, get the word out there, work with John Petrillo and the communication team, get it out on all of our sources of communication, and, uh, move forward. We probably, for the first, um, two weeks, four weeks, six weeks, we'll put out our message board sign to tell people in advance what we're doing. So it's very important to get, uh, the communication out, and we'll make sure that gets done.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other new business or communication? If not, uh, is there a motion to, uh, adjourn the board meeting?
So made.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those, uh, in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? The board meeting is adjourned. The ayes have it. Okay. Next is, uh, I'd like the committee at a whole meeting to be called to order approval of the committee at a whole meeting, minutes of November nineteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Motion to approve? Second.
Motion and a second. Comments, questions, deletions? If not, roll call.
President Byrne.
Well, we got- we got a motion and a second. Who's the, who's the second?
Schultz.
Okay. Roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustee's Cook.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Takaoka.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Markford.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Uh, the Darling Farm Development, and this will be Director of the Building Department, uh, Atkinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can give you a brief update as the developers walk up to the-
Are you guys all here for this?
Presentation.
You wanna go- come forward?
Uh, I- I'll give a brief summary, and then I can pass it off to Panatoni Development, who's proposing, uh, the development. So Panatoni is appearing before you tonight to present their plans for a light industrial development on property that's shown on the screen in front of you that we all know as the Darling Farm. Note that, uh, what's shown on this plan is wetlands that are delineated in red and yellow. Uh, the ones that are in red will be mitigated and removed from the site. The ones in yellow will remain and will not be impacted by the proposed development. Uh, this next slide, uh, shows, uh, what they are proposing, which would be to subdivide the, uh, subdivide the property into four lots, each containing one building. Additional lots would be subdivided to accommodate three detention, uh, facilities. There would be a north-south public right-of-way that would be installed that would connect to Corporate Woods Parkway to the north and Forest Edge Drive to the south. Land acquisition would be required to make both connections, uh, and they have been in discussion with- in discussion with the land owners, which is Van Vlisogen, and they have general agreement on the purchase of those properties, although it has not been completed as of yet. The south connection on the Forest Edge Drive, you'll note, goes through the Corporate Woods PUD, so an amendment to that PUD will be required as part of the approval for this overall development. We're still working through the details of how we're going to go about doing that, but an amendment will be required. Uh, this is a rendering of what the building would look like, which is, uh, tilt-up precast panels, uh, there'd be clear-story glass, uh, facades, uh, designed into the main entrance. I think the board is aware of where Neil Enterprises was constructed within the last couple of years, it's at the corner of Route forty-five and Woodlands Parkway. That's a fairly good representation of what these buildings will look like. Panatoni would tell you that their buildings are going to look a lot better, but I think that gives you a general sense, uh, of how the buildings will look and what the scale of the buildings would be as well. They will be designed to accommodate and attract current market trends for industrial users, uh, which includes, uh, distribution facilities, e-commerce, uh, headquarter uses, uh, and similar, uh, light manufacturing uses. These uses would be in compliance with current zoning for this property, which is BP Business Park use, and would also be consistent with what was, uh, recommended in the Melanophy report, uh, which is light industrial uses for this property. So, again, this is just concept presentation, an opportunity for the board to get feedback, for, for the developer to get feedback from the board, uh, and then if the board feels it's appropriate, uh, then the matter should be directed to the technical review process, that would then go on to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing, and then back to the board for final consideration. And with that, I'll pass it on to Panatoni who can provide further details and answer any questions that you might have.
And your name is?
Hi, good evening, my name is John Pagliari and I'm a partner with Panatoni Development Company here in Chicago.
Okay.
Uh, thanks, Mike, for the introduction and, you know, we're very excited to be here, it's a very big project we're taking on here in Vernon Hills, this, uh, Darling Farm, uh, a great piece of property that, uh, you know, we feel very confident in developing with these four light industrial buildings, you know, these are more of a modern building, thirty-two foot clear heights, they can accommodate a number of users in each building, two or three tenants in each building, that's really the key to them, they're very flexible. You know, we've kind of separated the cars from the trucks, we don't like, uh, mixing cars and trucks, we have all the trucks and the truck courts in the back, there's a hundred and thirty feet of maneuvering area for those trucks, so, uh, we keep them separate and as Mike mentioned, there's a north-south road, uh, connecting Forest Edge Drive with Corporate Parkway, and, uh, you know, we feel that was important too, to have two access points into the, uh, new park here, well, the park within a park, really, and, uh, uh, you know, trying to staying out of all the wetlands over there towards, uh, twenty-one and on the east side of the site, so, uh, very excited to be here again, we felt we had built, uh, designed some, uh, very modern and, uh, usable industrial buildings for future tenants and, uh, here to answer any questions you may have.
How are you doing with Van Vlisogen?
Fine, uh, Chuck Lampfier, you know, known him from before, and, uh, he actually owns both parcels that we need, one to the south, uh, connecting the Forest Edge and then a smaller piece to the north, and, uh, we've got a contract back and forth with Chuck to, uh, you know, for a substantial amount of money, I might add, to buy those, uh, it's basically about an acre of land.
What a shock.
But, uh, he, he actually has been great to work with and he knew this was coming, I think, all along, there was actually a seventy-foot, uh, piece on the south that was, you know, kind of earmarked for a connection to the Darling Farm for all these years, so, you know, it's something he knew was coming.
Now, is, as far as you can have any sidewalks in there for the people that work there?
Um, you know, I, I.
That would be a novelty because Corporate Woods has none.
Does not have any.
And you're not Corporate Woods.
Right, yeah, we won't be a, a member of that association.
Right.
Corporate Woods. Uh, we haven't really talked about it.
Well, you know, just for the people that want to, you know, take a walk.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, what you do in Corporate Woods now, you walk through the parking lot, wherever you're.
Or walk on the street, you know, we'll do.
Take some laps around your cars. You know? Well, I'm just saying, you know, I mean.
Mm-hmm. Around that lake or that, to make it an amenity, you know?
Right, like you mentioned, that, that will be a large, uh, wetland slash detention pond, so it would be, you know, attractive.
Yeah, I mean, I guess this will go down in, you know, through technical review, but I think you got to make it more pedestrian-friendly than Corporate Woods.
Mm-hmm, yeah, sure, especially along that north-south, uh, right-of-way that we're building, you know, maybe that's on the east side of that where you're kind of along the pond there, the, the problem was it won't connect to another sidewalk though, you'll get to the Corporate Woods Parkway and it won't connect to another sidewalk.
Oh, it's, it's what I'm, yeah, I know.
Yeah, so, uh, we can only control our property, but yeah, no, it's a, it's a great idea.
Then you, you put on like a, a Public Works reflective vest, so you don't get hit by a truck or a car. Okay, go, go ahead. Anybody got any questions for these guys?
Uh, you're talking, um, some pretty tight parking requirements there, you're meeting the bare minimums, I think.
As far as car parking?
And also for truck parking too, I mean, uh, yeah, each building is thirty docks, plus or minus, but the D building has more, uh, but, uh, I was, I'm always a little leery of having to park in each of the, the truck bays.
Mm-hmm, sure, you know, and we've, we've shown a hundred and thirty-foot truck maneuvering area there, which is pretty substantial for most trucks to get around.
Truck, uh, you could park one parallel.
Right, well, we, we basically have a design where the, they can park against the building, but we don't want them parking away from the building, we have no trailer stalls away from the building, you know, we, we build down an I fifty-five and that's really more of a truck-heavy, truck-intensive market where this really is more light assemblers and, you know, a little more office component.
I, in my career, built over six million square feet of this stuff, so.
Wow, great.
Yeah. Uh, thirty-two foot clear, you, and you're going to.
Correct.
Plan on clear-story windows and.
Yep, mm-hmm.
Embedded in the panel.
Yeah, we, we rather that than the skylights because they kind of crack and leak, so we rather the clear-story windows, they bring in a natural light and they, they look pretty good too.
Yeah. Mechanically fastened rubber roofs or?
Right, EPDM, forty-five mil, yep, mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, they're, you know, they all come with a twenty-year warranty in these roofs, so these buildings are pretty energy-efficient and pretty easy to maintain, so they're, you know, you see why they all go up so quickly, but they're, they're, you know.
Twelve-hundred amp service to each?
You, you know, that, that is questionable, comment's pretty, uh, tough on how much amps they'll give you without having a tenant in hand, these would be speculative buildings, so they want to see proof that you need twelve-hundred amps before they deliver it, so they typically would deliver a, a smaller house panel, and then when you need more with proof of, uh, bills from the user.
What's their lead time these days though?
Oh, you know, they're pretty quick these days, you know, quick being, you know, three, four months at least, you know, but we're already talking to them now about this so I can get in capacity that way, so we try to plan ahead.
Okay, where's the residential at?
The residential is in the far southwest corner, uh, west of Building D there, uh, it's a apartment complex, uh, and that, where the, we have a pond just north of it, you see?
Yeah, it's the Oaks.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so we, you know, the, the setback was only about twenty-five feet there, I think, per code, and we ended up with a little larger setback there, and also, uh, Mike and Dave Brown have been very helpful with us, we've met with them a number of times on this plan, uh, we had the docks facing south and facing over towards that residential, and they didn't want us to do that, so we flipped the building around, Building D, to have the docks face north away from the residential.
Good, good.
So, we've had, you know, some back and forth with the staff, that's all been very helpful.
Yeah. It's a good, uh, it, I mean, is there any other comments from any board members on this?
I just, I like the idea of the, um, some kind of a pedestrian-friendly thing around that lake you've got there, because I do see, uh, I, like you said, Corporate Woods does not have anything like that, and I do see, um, along fairway and that, a lot of people taking advantage of the sidewalks that are there to go down to our, um, Veterans Memorial and, and the Arbor Theater there and during lunch breaks or whatever, um, I, I would think it would be a, a selling point for people coming.
Mm-hmm, sure, people on lunch hour, right.
Yeah.
You know, at the very least, we could put one along that east side of that, uh, north-south road, you know, when you try to lap around the pond, sometimes that is so easy because you have detention all the way up into the edge of the building, and there it is wetlands over there on that whole east side, so we, we try to stay away from that wetlands because then the Army Corps gets involved when you have more than an acre of disturbance.
Yeah.
We try to stay under that acre of disturbance, so, you know, for sure, we can put a sidewalk running north and south along that, uh, north, source, north-south road, on the east side of the north-south road.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea.
Okay. Want to give the speech, counselor?
Not a guarantee of formal approval, ultimately, when this comes back to the village board, uh, this was a chance to get some input, uh, now you'll go on to technical review, uh, and ultimately to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing, you'll come back to the committee of the whole, and then, uh, it will, it will be directed to the village board for final approval. And, any questions relative to the process?
No, that's very, well, it was very put together with, uh, the staff beforehand, so, thank you.
Okay. Is everybody okay to let this go forward? Okay. That's all we could tell you tonight.
Okay, great, well, appreciate your time.
Yeah, yeah, have you done, built in town before?
We have not built in Vernon Hills before, we're all over, you know, Green Oaks, uh, number of buildings in Lake County, up in Waukegan.
Yeah.
Uh, Mundaline, um, certainly by O'Hare, I fifty-five, Lincolnshire.
Who's this guy?
Who's this guy, he's a, he's a broker, so, you know, watch your wallet, but he's a, he, he's a, with Cushman and Wakefield, he'll represent us on, uh, on these buildings.
Yeah, that's fine. Is that your architect?
And that's our architect, Kelly Harris, with Harris Architects.
Okay. All right, guys, well, I'm sure you'll figure this out.
Okay, great, well, thanks for your time.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Take care. Uh, okay, Dave?
Thank you very much, uh, next item is the capital improvement program, uh, we're presenting the five-year plan, um, with the goal of, of preparing for the fiscal year budget for next year, um, should there be anything on the list that the board decides that they would want earlier or later, by all means, uh, uh, your feedback is solicited. I won't spend a lot of time at this meeting going through all of the details, uh, just want to present that, obviously, we will be back in, uh, February, March to have more discussions as part of the budget process, uh, so, um, feel free to interrupt me, uh, if not, I'm going to keep, uh, rolling through. Oh, you are? Okay.
So, before Dave starts spending money, how about we talk revenues? There was a little bit of a, kind of a quickie analysis of what we're kind of projecting for the end of FY twenty, and we were projecting into FY twenty-one. I just wanted to touch base on that before Dave goes into the specifics of the capital, um, that we're hoping to do in the next few years, but, um, for FY twenty projections, uh, I want to refer to the October twenty-nineteen Treasuries Report that was passed, um, at the board, or handed out with the, uh, board agenda. As it was mentioned in there, the revenues are slightly exceeding projections at this time, and expenditures are at, um, or below budget, which is a great place to be in right now. Our projected income was going to be four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, no, is that right?
Where are you at? And you're?
I am just, uh, kind of like giving an overview, starting with the actual October Treasuries Report that was handed out, or part of the transmittal, so just a little brief where we're at in twenty, and then I'm going to go to FY twenty-one projections. Okay. Sorry about that, um, yeah, we had projected a, uh, an, a surplus or an income for FY twenty of four hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, but at this point right now, with actual dollars, we're at, uh, two million, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand, that's on page two of the October Treasuries Report, just kind of a peek of where we're at as of October, so obviously, we still have another half year to go. For our year-end projections though, we are actually, uh, projecting eight hundred and eighty-two thousand above budget, and that can be seen on the, uh, when you start looking at the handout that we had for the FY twenty year-end projections and the FY twenty-one, um, projected amounts. Of that eight hundred and eighty-two thousand, um, over budget, it's basically sales and home rule tax is about two hundred and twenty thousand, uh, community development is a, a wonderful addition to this of two hundred and fifty-six thousand, because of all the building that's going on this fiscal year, uh, income tax is about two hundred and thirty thousand, uh, unfortunately, electric and telecom tax is bringing us down to two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, food and beverage is up about two hundred and fifty-five thousand, and oven, other revenues is about a hundred and sixty-three thousand, and this is what we're projecting for the end of the, this current fiscal year. These projections, then, we use to go to our FY twenty, twenty-one projections, but again, we're very early in the process right now because we're only half year done, and we will definitely revisit this, as Dave was indicating, um, and we want to remain conservative because we always like our revenues to be higher than our expenditures. So, at this time, our new revenue growth projection is, uh, only four hundred and forty-two thousand from FY twenty budget. That amount will cover the increase in payroll and operating costs. However, uh, pension costs are going to be more of a challenge, we don't have a completed police pension actuarial presented at this time, but just to talk about IMRF, we are going from ten point six-nine percent to thirteen point one-four percent for the employer contribution, and we will be bringing pension.
Why?
Actuaries, why? They changed their interest, um, they lowered their interest amount and, I'm trying to think, we talked about this a couple, a few sessions or a few boards, I want to say, a couple of months back, um, I want to say, they might have been the actuary.
We also look at the actuarial report, look at how long people are living, and people tend to live a little bit longer now, so that's reflected in making longer pension payments.
When was the last time they did a deep dive like this?
They do it every four or five years, so it's been a while since they've looked at that particular assumption, I know.
And actually, that was where I was going to pretty much wrap, wrap it up, is projections are, will be reviewed again, you know, over the next few months, and we will definitely have the draft budget coming out mid to late February, so we'll have a little bit more actual dollars to help us with year-end projections and then FY twenty-one projections.
Bottom, bottom line, we're doing very well this year, and we think next year it's going to be a little bit snug in terms of revenue growth to cover all of our expense increases, I think, at this point, uh, but, but again, we'll continue to work on the numbers, both on the revenue side and the expenditure side, before we bring it to the board for, for their input, so.
And, I mean, collectively, from the state, how, how much are we not getting anymore? Do we have a total number that the state keeps on us, you know, keeps, that we, we still get, you know, for personal income tax? Is that going to go up or go down?
Well, those numbers are up significantly this year, and we're, we're taking a close look at that for next year, we don't have a final.
Is that based on the current, uh, you know?
The current rates, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, and I appreciate the, the overview, um, so we're going to jump into the expenditure side, um, we did, uh, present previously the road rehab program, we're going to be at finishing the north end of Hawthorne Club, Sugar Creek, Old Grove Farms, uh, is the program, uh, Greg's Landing in Huntington, right turn removal, should the study prove out that the temporary measures are in fact, uh, safer and useful, uh, we included seventy thousand dollars for that line item. Moving forward, preventive maintenance program, these are similar programs, uh, to previous years, we're looking to not use the seal coat budget and move that into reclamite, we feel that the reclamite, uh, program has really helped our, our village stretch our, uh, dollars for our roadway uses. Annual sidewalk program, seventy-five thousand. A footnote, the current year's budget for the, by Public Works along Butterfield Road, the EJNE to Greg's Parkway sidewalk, we had it in this current budget year. After looking at the numbers and meeting with LDOT, the project is substantially more than what was anticipated, so I've asked LDOT if they would take the lead. It is their right-of-way, and Mundaline owns fifty percent of, fifty percent of the path would be within their jurisdiction. So we're looking for a partnership, so that project is gonna be delayed until we can obtain additional funding. Let's see, traffic signals, the CDW traffic signal, we have a permit with IDOT that's been outstanding for many years. We're proposing to move forward with that, with the design engineering in FY '2021, and following up with the construction the year thereafter. The Lakeview project is a substantial increase in terms of our budget, but there's a lot of value with that, that project also.
And, and the CDW light?
Yes, sir.
Will we get any contribution from anybody?
I believe there was some contribution from CDW in one of the agreements many years ago, but I was, it's more through osmosis.
Yeah, well, yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, you know, that's why it's sitting there looking how it looks.
Absolutely.
It was supposed to be donations, not, maybe not just from them, maybe from, you know, more, more people in the business part, but a million eight for that light, oh.
So it's a traffic signal, it's a left turn into the site would be dual lanes, and then it extends all the way back to the senior citizen facility, in terms of the improvements that were committed to approaching ten years ago.
Oh, I'll bet. Yeah, okay.
Moving along to the Lakeview project, there's, as part of a federal eligible program, there's some funds that are required that we pay upfront, there's other ones that IDOT pays upfront and reimburses us. So, you know, those are our four line items for land acquisition, utility relocation, phase-three engineering, and then ultimately, the construction. Streetlight LED fixtures and poles, Sugar Creek, we're proposing to do that next budget year, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Those are old Sternberg poles, they require replacement at this time. The following year, we would tackle Old Grove Farms. Local drainage program, typically, we have twenty-five thousand for that one. We're really looking at, my street division may do a lot more in the next coming years in terms of local drainage programs. We're starting to have a lot of feedback, primarily in the Deer Path area. Some of the, some of the subdivision was built in the mid to late seventies. There's a lot of things that the developer probably did back in that, those days, that we would not do today, but some pump discharges that are impacting our sidewalks, icing up the sidewalks, and so we'd like to have a hundred thousand dollars. If it's a larger rear yard program, we would probably contract that out. I'm challenging my street division that we may do more of these in-house, we have the capability of doing it. We'd like to have a program as far as, as you say, Mayor Byrne, that if the homeowners have some skin in the game, then those would go more towards the top, and that would help us in terms of prioritizing where we should spend our funds.
Yeah. Yeah, water's not our friends.
No, not at all.
Unless it's coming out of the faucet.
Something, something that's very important to all of us is Lake Charles. We did look to move forward before with a aeration system, when we talked to the Park District in terms of the electrical system that we would connect to. They're having problems with rodents eating all the wires on the east side of Lake Charles, so we thought that might not be a good idea to rely on that system. So in this year's budget, we're proposing that we don't have electrical source, and it would be solar-powered. It'd be a similar system as what I've presented previously. It would just rely on solar instead of a hard electrical system. Tennis court contribution to the Park District, that's in this current year budget, and we would look to roll that over to next year. Sounds like they're awaiting funding, and so that's why it would be next year rather than this year. Village Hall, carpeting is nice in this room and in the basement, in the new conference rooms that Mike Atkinson helped with, but in terms of the rest of the Village Hall, eighty-two thousand dollars for recarpeting that area. The muni, the irrigation system, it's a control and variable drive pump upgrade, so basically, all the pumps that run the irrigation system are woefully outdated and require replacement. I have a number of sixty thousand right now. I've heard, after checking with some vendors, that that number could almost double. This does not include the PVC irrigation system throughout the course, it's the heart of the system, which is really the pumps and controls.
I'm afraid, though, if you put new pumps in there, you're gonna blow out the PVC that's in place. I mean, he fixes five, six breaks a year.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a homeowner's irrigation system servicing a municipal requirement. Whatever.
Dave, how old is the carpeting at the golf course clubhouse? Do you know? Because we might want to take a look at, it looks like it's been.
Let me look into that for you. Good comment, carpet. Good comment, thank you. The, some other vehicles that they've asked for is a golf course utility vehicle, some people call it like a Kubota. They've also looked for a new mower, and in the following year, a loader tractor. We need to sit down as part of the bigger picture, where we should be spending our money and prioritize those, and we will do that and come back to the board. Communication center, two hundred thousand dollars for a new flat roof, consistent with what they presented today. And then replacement boilers, eighty-five thousand. The, let's see, firing range backstop and baffle replacement, ninety thousand. The sirens that the police department has been overseeing, this would be the last year of our upgrade to the siren system, thirty-five thousand. Public Works building, the HVAC air handling unit and condensing unit. Juan has tried to use bubble gum and baling wire to hold it together. It's served its useful life, and we need a new one. Those are expensive, that's two hundred and forty thousand. Getting to the last page. Philip Road, the Philip Road building, the police department has a need for the impounding of cars. There's been rules that require that they be held longer, and with that, there's more of a need. Instead of having those stored at Ernie's or the like, we're gonna partner with the police department to find a location within the Philip Road building, and so there's some money there. You will also see that there's fencing and asphalt. We need to get a no future remediation letter from the Park District, from the EPA, before we spend a lot of money in terms of a new fence and asphalt. We'll probably bundle those items together with the storage yard. We're in conversation with the police department if there's a one-year solution that they can park inside the existing facility, that may give them seven spots. I don't think that meets their full need. I suspect that it could be up to twelve cars that they need to impound. So we'll come back to you with that in February. And then IT equipment, there's a number of these, and again, we'll give you more detail later, but UPS battery replacement for the 911 Center, a hundred and sixty-one thousand. Disaster recovery, eighty thousand. Integration system, a hundred thousand, and then cameras of ninety thousand. Those are the, some of the larger ones that are proposed. So that's our presentation. If you have any additional comments?
In the sidewalk program, I'd like to see if we could piggyback and make a couple of improvements here in the Lashen Park.
Okay. Is your thought, Trustee Schultz, of extending the sidewalk to connect to the south or bring it through?
And then also maybe traversing through the high ground there with the potential of a bench or whatever, so someone can just sit there. I mean, you know, you need to have something that your arborist can design simply, you know, a couple extra trees from our tree replacement program.
I mean, this is, this doesn't include the waterfall.
No, no, no. No memorial, no.
Yeah, okay.
I could bring the landscape architect back for you.
No, no, no.
Oh, we're good there?
No water feature in the Arbor Theater.
And let us talk to the Park District. I know that the two boards are having some discussions as far as what the Lashen Center site should be. We're talking to them about a lease arrangement. I don't know what funds we want to put into it upfront. It certainly is a great canvas that we should do something with it.
The other thing is, at the Arbor Theater, can you have the arborist take a look at the memorial area itself and the access to it? Each year, it gets more and more difficult to march in there with the flags and everything. If we could clear the canopy away from the sidewalks, we're all getting old, and we fall down easy.
We'll look into that for sure.
Yeah. You gotta do trim job over there.
Since we're talking sidewalks, I think I brought up with you the question about possibly putting a sidewalk connection on the east side of Lakeview, where Pinehurst, the northwest side of the Pinehurst community. I often will see people crossing, there's a little path there that kind of go, it ends up at that east-west street that we used to enter in to go to the holiday light show. There's a little sidewalk there, and people will cross over the street without any crosswalk with their kids to go to the long path to get to the Century Park.
Okay, so the crossing you're talking about would be south of the EJNE and.
South of the EJNE, yeah.
Tying into Candy Cane Lane, or what it ever used to be called?
Yeah, tying in to that, or really, there's a little path just south of that Candy Cane Lane.
Okay.
And then, I don't know if we have a name for the, yeah, I guess really tying into that, crossing across the street there to the, to the pedestrian walkway that goes on the north end of Century Park.
Sounds good. We'll look into that and put a price together.
Thanks.
Any other thoughts or comments? Appreciate the feedback that I've received.
Just a, just a comment on the Phillips, I want to just make sure it has the budget, but I drive that way, the gates open at the Phillips building right there, where they park the cars. I've actually locked it, I think, twice or three times. So I don't know, and this was over the, over the weekend, it was open. I was gonna attempt, I went in, and then someone did close it.
Thank you.
Whose responsibility is that? Oh, police departments?
It's a joint, a joint effort, but we need those vehicles secured, but Public Works needs open access to work, but certainly on the weekend, give us a call, because we want that.
I can close it, so it doesn't bother me, so.
We're working together.
We'll make sure it's addressed, thank you.
Yeah, I lock it, and I lock it, and I just shut them off.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. That's enough for tonight, right?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
You, Dave?
Is there a closed session?
No.
Is there a motion to adjourn committee of the whole?
So made. Second.
Second.
Second. Roll call.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Justice Cook?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Tacaoka?
Aye.
Brown? Schultz?
Aye.
Marquardt?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, thank you, and good night.